A Thursday, January 21st, 2021 meeting of the Franklin Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. Franklin Township is operating under a declaration of state and local emergency due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and it has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of the zoning board would pose a risk to health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting has been relocated from the council chambers to a virtual meeting format and is being conducted utilizing virtual/remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the State of New Jersey. The relocation of this virtual meeting of the zoning board was posted in the township's official newspaper, The Courier News, on the township's website and on exterior doorways of the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation in this remote meeting: link to the virtual meeting via WebEx, call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials was made available via the township website and/or by appointment in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. Reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. Please withhold questions until all of the applicant's witnesses have finished presenting, at which time the chair will ask the board for comment. Instructions for public input: For those of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. Press the raised hand button to use this feature. Find your name on the participant list and hover over your name. A raised hand icon will appear. Click on the raised hand icon, which will place a small hand next to your name in the participant list. Or use the chat function. Either use the default, which is everyone, or chat Mark Healy. Do not send the message to Christine Woodbury as she's unable to view messages during the meeting. Also, please do not use the Q&amp;A section as we do not access that during the meeting. For those of the public that are listening via the call-in number who wish to speak, please press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name, unmute you, and you will have opportunity to provide comments. Please provide your name and address. If providing a statement, the board's attorney will swear you in. After speaking, if on WebEx, please press the lower hand button. If calling in, please press star three again. So moving on to votes of office.
Okay, I have three regular members to swear in. That's Joel Reese, Cheryl Bethia, and Alan Rich. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Unmute yourselves.
Right. And repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Alan Rich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And justly
And justly
Perform all of the duties
Perform all of the duties
Of a regular member
Of a regular member
Of the Franklin Township Board of Adjustment.
Of the Franklin Township Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Now for the alternate members, Rich Prokranik and Kunal Lakia. Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kunal Lakia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And justly perform
And justly perform
All of the duties
All of the duties
Of alternate member of the Franklin Township Board of Adjustment.
Of alternate member
Of the Franklin Township Board of Adjustments.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine, now we swear in Mark. Mark?
Yes, that's correct.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mark Healy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance
And I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
Impartially
Impartially
And justly
And justly
Perform all of the duties
Perform all of the duties
Of professional planner
Of professional planner
For the Franklin Township Board of Adjustment.
For the Franklin Township Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, so moving to reorganization. At this time, I'll take nominations for chairperson.
I nominate Bob Thomas.
Bob Thomas.
I second.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? After hearing none, Christine, why don't you take role?
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes, with pleasure.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Kunal Lakia?
Yes.
And Chairman Bob Thomas.
Okay, thank you.
In the meeting, over to you, Bob.
Honored to serve with a board like this. It's the best board that I can have come in contact with. We'll now take nominations for vice chair. I would like to nominate Bob Shepard. I know he's not here.
I'll second him.
He's been ill.
I'll second.
I understand he's recovering.
I just need a second for that.
I'll second him. I'll second.
Okay, Joel. Okay, Cheryl Bethia?
Hold up. You should ask for any other nominations.
Go ahead, Bob Thomas, sorry.
What do we need? You can pull the board.
Okay. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Kunal Lakia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Thank you, and we'll move to board attorney interviews. Would you give a quick overview, Mark?
Sure. Well, as per your bylaws, there was a request for proposals sent out. We received one proposal, which is the firm of your current board attorney. So again, per your bylaws, he is here this evening, and you are to interview the firm prior to deciding whether to appoint.
Okay, sometimes an interview seems to be a little bit of a misnomer. Are there any board members who would like to make comments, ask questions of our potential board attorney, or make any statements, I guess?
Yes, this is Gary Rosenthal. I always ask this question. On your other appointments, Dan, will there be any conflicts with our board at all?
No, my schedule should not change, and I should be able to attend all meetings unless I need, of course, a coverage.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to get you to put it on the record. You're the attorney we get, correct?
Yes, I have been here all year, and I plan on being here for at least 2021.
Okay, I appreciate it. I feel very good for zone with you. I think you've made some tremendously valuable contributions at several of the meetings. And
I'm a motion board.
Maybe some of the newer members haven't experienced it yet, but we've pretty much been a one-attorney board for a lot of years. After we get comfortable with that person, and I'm glad it's going to be you. Any other comments?
No.
Yeah, before the board I agree, Bob.
Let me, before the board makes a resolution, let me just clarify. So you do have a draft resolution. There were some blanks in there. So I would suggest that the second page of the resolution, the hourly rate would be filled in per the proposal that was sent in. It would indicate $175 per hour performed by attorneys and shall otherwise be paid at the rates indicated legal services on page 22 of the attached proposal. Again, and that was included in your packet. Then obviously, the section that was left blank for vendor would be the Dakota's firm. So with those amendments, I would suggest a motion can be made.
I saw moved.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's three people talking. Joel, you moved it. Cheryl, you second. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes, with pleasure, again.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Kunal Lakia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes.
You all.
Think we can proceed with the roll call?
The resolution, I filled in the blank.
Sure, to start the attendance, it's Cheryl Bethia. You want me to do the roll call, right, Bob Thomas?
Do we need to? We did it last night.
Mark is saying yes. So Cheryl Bethia, are you here?
Here.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Bob Shepard asked to be excused. Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
Kunal Lakia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes. Moving to the minutes of the regular meeting, December 3rd, 2020. Is there a motion for approval?
I move to accept.
Second.
Okay, Kunal Lakia, you're the only one that cannot vote on these minutes. Cheryl Bethia?
Oh, yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
The next minutes Alan Rich is unable to vote on?
Regular meeting, December 17th, okay.
That's correct.
I move to accept.
Okay, Gary moved and Joel second. Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Kunal Lakia?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
For the resolution for Richey, there are only three people or four people who can vote on it. The people who are eligible to vote are Bruce McCracken, Joel Reese, Gary Rosenthal, and Chairman Thomas.
Okay, this is ZBA 2000020.
I move to accept.
Okay, Joel was first, who's second, I'm sorry?
I'll second.
Bruce, you're second, thank you. Okay, Bruce McCracken?
Yes.
Joel Reese?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes. I believe Christine has a formal announcement to read regarding 150 Pierce Street, ZBA 2000017 variance site plan for 16,000 square foot addition to a charter parking expansion for farm script use and associated site plan modifications. 150 Pierce Street Somerset Block 468.08, Lot 2.02 in M2 Zone. This will be carried to a future date, which she will mention.
Okay, as Chairman Thomas stated, this matter will be carried to Thursday, February 4th, at 7:30 PM via the virtual meeting. In order to attend the virtual meeting, you can sign into Franklin T W P N J dot org forward slash home forward slash components forward slash calendar forward slash event forward slash 17582 forward slash 2193. For those of you calling in, the phone number to attend this meeting is 1408-418-9388. The access code is 1736683801. And if you have any questions or concerns, you can reach out to me, Christine Woodbury. My phone number at the township is 732-873-2500, and my extension is 6215.
Okay, that announcement is on the screen momentarily. We'll be moving to the first hearing soon, Zen Lu, ZBA 2000022. This is certification of a pre-existing non-conforming use in which the applicant contends that detached building has been occupied as a residence at 166 Victor Street Somerset Block 143 Lots 15 to 17 in the R7 Zone. And I do believe we have an attorney for this.
Yes, I will bring in the attorney, the applicant. They have a witness as well, so I'll bring them and make them panelists. All right, so Mr. Lanford, I brought in Mr. Liu and Mr. Bekus. Is there anybody else that should be brought over?
That should be it. Mr. Healy?
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Liu. As you indicated in your opening comment, this is an application for a certification of a pre-existing non-conforming use. The property in question is located at 166 Victor Street. And on the subject property are two separate structures, both of them being used as dwellings. As the board is aware, in order to obtain a certification of a pre-existing non-conforming use, we have to prove to the board that the structures pre-existed the zoning ordinance in Franklin Township, which was in 1958, and then have been used for the purposes which we will testify to as residential dwellings. I have two witnesses, the owner of the property, Mr. Liu, and then Mr. Bekus. When Mr. Bekus is sworn in, I'd like to have Mr. Healy turn over the screen to him so he can share the exhibits which were part of our submission in this matter. Having said that, I would like to call Mr. Liu as my first witness.
Mr. Liu, can you hear me? You're muted, sir.
My apologies. Can you guys hear me right now?
Yes, I can hear you. Mr. Liu, I'm going to swear you in, so please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your names, spell your last for the record.
My name's Sin, and last name's Liu, spelled L-I-U.
Thank you, Mr. Lanford. You can proceed.
Thank you, counselor. Mr. Liu, you are the owner of the property, which is the subject of this application?
Yes.
And when did you purchase the property?
I purchased on November 1st, 2020.
Okay, and as I indicated in my opening comments, the property is located at 166 Victor Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
And can you tell the board what is on that property?
There is two structures, two structures with living spaces in them.
Okay, and for the purpose of discussion, there is a house closest to Victor Street, which is a single-family residential dwelling. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you currently reside in that house?
Yes.
Okay, and then there is a second structure to the rear and left of the main house as you're looking at the property from Victor Street. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and when you first looked at the property to purchase it, did you look at both structures?
Yes.
And with respect to the house to the rear, the small building, can you describe the layout of the house?
The layout of the house is roughly 500 square feet. And there's a kitchen, a living room, a bedroom, a storage area, and a bathroom.
And when you visited the property prior to purchasing, was that structure occupied?
Yes.
Okay, there was a tenant residing in that structure?
Yes.
Okay, and was the main house occupied?
Yes.
Okay, at the present time, the small structure, is it currently occupied?
Sorry, can you repeat that one more time, please?
Yeah, you indicated you're living in the main house in the smaller structure. Is anybody living there at the present time? Okay, and are you rehabbing the structure, starting to do some work on it, and that's why it's not currently occupied?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions of Mr. Liu. My next witness will be Mr. Bekus.
I have a question. In his certification, he indicates that he resides at 1 John F. Kennedy Boulevard. So, did he move?
Yeah, when we filled out the certification or the application, the property was under contract. He did not own it. So at that time, he was residing at 1 John F. Kennedy Boulevard. We have since closed on the property, and he's currently residing at 166 Victor.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any questions from the board or professionals?
Yes, I have one. How is this property listed? Was it listed with like one lot, what, two houses, or how was it listed?
It's, it is listed on Zillow as a single family.
Just one single-family house?
Yes.
So there was no mention of the second house?
So I actually found this by just driving around. This wasn't from like a realtor.
So you didn't buy it from a realtor?
No.
Okay, so it was owner sold then, right?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time? I don't know.
The owner of the property sold it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all for now. Other questions?
In the rear of the, this, the rear property or the rear dwelling, that has a separate address?
No. No, there's no separate address for that.
Other questions? Slide back, next witness.
Mr. Bekus?
Yes, I'm hoping you can hear me. Ah, Christmas.
No, we can hear you, Dave.
We can hear you. Mr. Lanford, I made him presenter.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
I'm not, can you see me? Because I can't see me.
Who cannot see you.
I don't know why that is. Let's see, audio and video?
Got this stuff, Sharon?
All right, I'm sorry you can't see me. I could see me on the camera, but it's taking my picture. I don't understand why you guys can't see me.
Mr. Lanford, what is Mr. Bekus going to testify to?
Basically, he is a contractor and builder and has experience in determining ages of dwellings. And his testimony is going to be concerning the age of both the existing main house and secondary structure, the second house.
Are you going to be offering him as an expert?
Yes.
I believe we need his video.
That's the problem.
I have settings, I have camera, and I can see myself very clearly in the WebEx browser. Like you guys, I cannot see myself in the little screen.
Did you hit start video?
I'm looking for that. It says switch audio, speaker or microphone settings, unmute.
Where it says start video, you hit that.
There should be a video at the bottom.
Bottom, okay. Now we're good.
Okay, great. Mr. Bekus, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us the professional address, please.
David Bekus, B-E-K-U-S, 45 Hunt Lane, Skilman, New Jersey, 08558.
Okay, Mr. Lanford, could you please qualify, Mr. Bekus?
Sure. Mr. Bekus, what is your occupation?
Originally, as a contractor, building inspector, and the last few years, I've been doing quite a bit of expert witness testimony, both before zoning boards and in courts and litigation for construction-related issues.
And in those construction-related issues, have you ever testified either in courts or boards regarding dwellings, their ages, and when they were constructed?
Yes, I've previously testified before this board several times, Piscataway, Woodbridge, Southbound Brook, and New Brunswick.
I would offer the testimony of Mr. Bekus as an expert in the area of construction and also in the area of determining the age of a dwelling. Mr. Chairman?
Before I say that and do that, I have a question for Daniel.
Yes.
What are the standards we're applying here to determine expertise? Is there a certification or?
Well, when it comes to engineers and architects, yes, you need licensing. Mr. Bekus, you stated you're a construction code official?
I am licensed as a building inspector. I do not work for a town. I have an HHS license from the State of New Jersey as a building inspector. In other words, I could work for your town and inspect everything in your building, as a building inspector, not plumbing or electric.
But when you testified before court or other boards, in what capacity did you present that expert testimony?
Well, there's two aspects to that. One is as a Well, there's two aspects to that. One is as a zoning board, like in this case, as, as an expert in determining the age in buildings, that's most, that's based on my experience of extensive renovations in the area of central New Jersey, primarily New Brunswick, and, you know, renovating and dealing with old buildings. In my aspect of doing, I do a lot of construction litigation work. That's based on my building inspections and again, my experience over many years of working in construction.
How many years?
I do this on a very regular basis.
Sure. How many years did you work in construction?
I started the day I got out of high school, literally the next day, in 1979 was my first day in construction. I started my own business in 1984. I obtained my building inspector's license in the early 90s. I don't recall the last date. I've been doing construction litigation since, on a part-time basis, since the early 2000s on a near full-time basis in at least the last five or six years.
Mr. Chairman, we can accept an expert on the basis of his experience if the information that was just provided to you by Mr. Bekus satisfies you that he has sufficient expertise in this area. The board is well within its right to accept him as an expert.
Okay, thanks. That's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Lanford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bekus, you were retained by the owner of the property for the purpose of examining the property and trying to determine the age of the structures that are contained on the properties. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and can you indicate to the board what you did in order to do that? And I know you submitted a report in conjunction with this application, and the screen has been given to you. If you want to put up any exhibits, you could do it in providing your testimony.
I don't have my report played available to go by. I have a different exhibit to go up. We can get into a minute. I was hoping that I could get it. It's going to take a minute to put the original report up.
I don't think you need to put the original, Mr. Bekus, I don't think you need to put the original report up, but if you have any photographs that you want to share, that's up to you.
Oh, I do. Yeah, I can walk through the, walk through the report and answer your question about, you know, what I did and the date I did. Then I could put up the next screen, which is very relevant. But if you want me to start with that, I will, or I'll start in the beginning with the report. It's up to you.
When did you visit the property?
I was there on August 12th, 2019. I was also there two days ago.
Okay, and when you went to the property in 2019, what did you do and what did you find?
2020. When I was there, I, I investigated the building in the rear. And I looked at it to determine whether it was an existing building, structured with the purpose of occupancy, or if it was converted, you know, from a garage or some other, some other use. Based on my observations and the items I've documented in my report, this building was designed, built, and used as an occupancy prior to 1959.
Okay, and how did you determine that?
Well, I've walked, the first thing I did is I, I looked at the orientation of the building, and it has a, a front door on the side. Two, there is no indication that this building was ever altered from a garage, which you would suspect it may change at some point. It has a bedroom, it had a kitchen, and particularly, it also had a chimney that's now abandoned, indicating an occupancy use. You often see chimneys on garages. Secondly, I look at the fenestration on the windows and all that, and in fact, just the layout of the windows. All of that indicated a, a building designed to be occupied for, for living. Further, there's a separate electric service for this building. And part of that service, there was an old post and a, what would have been a cover for a electric meter, which is now abandoned, but that was that type of construction, that crease soaked, soaked post. And the cover for the electric meter is indicated of a, you know, a, a quite old use. You didn't, you don't see those things on modern stuff. You don't see that type of setup actually from at least the 65. And then when I went into the house, it was, it had a kitchen, it had a bathroom. And not only did it have a bathroom, it has a four-inch cast iron saw line, again, indicating construction prior to at least to the 70s. In that case, most likely much before that. The siding on the building, the, there's a, what may be, it's either cement or partially asbestos siding. You see, but underneath that is a imitation brick siding. That was very common in the 20s and 30s in New Brunswick. You see that on a lot of, not as much anymore as buildings get renovated, but certainly on older buildings, you see that type of siding on many, many older buildings built in the 20s, 30s. All of those things, windows in a layout indicated a building that was built prior to 1959 for the intent, for the purpose of occupancy. And again, there was no indications that this was a garage that somebody, you know, converted at some point to do it. You could tell that it's just by where the front door and the porch was located, the saw line, and it forced a separate electric meter.
Mr. Bekus, did you also check the township records and to see what the public records indicate as far as the year of construction?
Yes, the year of construction from the public records was 1950.
Okay, and you, there is also another structure on the property, the, the main house, so to speak. And can you indicate whether the materials and construction and everything else are consistent with the construction of the main house?
Yes, I do. I forgot, but I do identify that in our report. Thank you for pointing that out. That the construction of the second building is very similar to, if not the same, as the construction of the first building, indicating that it was built at the same time.
Okay, and again, the municipal records indicate that the main structure was also dated back to the 1950s?
Yes.
Okay, now, on top of all of that, when you were at the property two days ago, did you discover anything else that would give the board any evidence as to when the structure was constructed?
Yes, you'd have to put the, share my screen for me to show it. Obviously, showing it will be very helpful. I'm assuming the moderator can, can share my screen.
You can put, you can put your, the exhibit up on your screen. The board should be able to see it.
Yeah, I have it up on my screen now. Is it visible?
No, you're visible.
How do I do that? Stop video, share? If I hit share, share.
Should be shared.
You would share and select that particular screen when that comes up?
Yeah, I'm looking for it. Should say start now, where it is. Let's try this one. And let's see. You see it?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. I was out two days ago as part of my preparation, just to, you know, take another quick look at the building prior to tonight's testimony. And I was, I was talking to the owner, and he said they had removed and done some minor demolition inside of this unit. So I said, well, let's go inside, take a look. And if you could look at the top picture, you could see that they used, this, I, I wrote this whole report and this whole thing, this particular evidence I'm going to show you now is, is actually the most compelling that we have. So Sonya, you could see that once they removed the original floor or an existing floor, the finished floor, there was newspapers that were used as an underlayment. You know, typically now, we would use rosin paper, foam, all different kind of things. But back, going back since they started making newspapers, they would often use newspapers underneath the surface as a separation between the subfloor and the finished floor. As you can see, they ripped it up. There's a couple of sections that were still left. If you scroll down, or I'll scroll down, or I'll try and scroll down. If you look right here, there's a date on this newspaper. I zoomed in on this date and to my surprise, not my surprise, but to my happiness, I guess, there's a date of March 16th, 1951. This is fairly conclusive that this building was built and used and occupied as a residence from March 16th, probably a little later than that, a few weeks later than that, 1951. Extremely unlikely that this survives so many years without it being the, you know, part of the original construction. I wish I had thought to rip the floor up when I was there doing my initial inspection.
Okay, so i- in conclusion, based on the observations of the building, the last piece of evidence, which is the newspaper, and also the municipal public records, you conclude that this structure, as well as the main structure, which you indicated, were built at approximately the same time, predated the zoning ordinance in 1958, as a matter of fact, date back to 1950.
Yes, I do. That there, this, this, this particular building has very compelling evidence that it was constructed prior to the zoning ordinances of the late 50s.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Bekus.
Okay, any board questions?
One, one question now from Mr. Lanford. Mr. Lanford, was this submitted, this picture or these pictures submitted to the board, or is this an exhibit?
This would be an exhibit. We just discovered this two days ago, so it was not submitted in advance, and we should mark it as A1.
Yep, we're going to mark it as A1, and we're going to call it photographs of interior demolition. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, yes, I, I've looked up the real estate listings for this property. And none of the several listings I looked at mentioned two, two buildings there. It only mentions one building, and it was purchased for $225,000 in, in, in November. So none of the listings acknowledge a second level building.
Is there plans to, to rent this other unit out?
Yes, there, there are. Mr. Liu is going to basically rehab it a little bit, but it, it was rented just before he purchased the property, and once he rehabs it, it will be rented again.
Mr. Lanford, if you'd like me to address why it wasn't listed, I could, I could apply on that, but if I don't, I will not.
Well, let, let's leave it as is for now, because I think how it was listed is irrelevant as opposed to the issue of the use.
I, I have a question of our attorney.
Sure.
If this is a, a separate level building, shouldn't it have a separate tax payment? Or have?
That is really not a question for this board. The, the, this board has a specific analysis to conduct on this kind of certification, and that is that the use or the structure existed prior to the enactment of the zoning ordinance, and that use or structure remained uninterrupted to its current date. If those two criteria are met, then the certification, the pre-existing non-conforming use should be granted. The tax map issue is a separate issue, most likely for the tax assessor's office in, in the township.
No, it's not continuously used because there's no one living there now.
Well, the, the structure or the use is in continuing, has continued uninterrupted.
Okay.
I have a question about the parking. Would, would that be an issue if there's, typically for a single-family home, the, the parking that's required for that, would, would that come into play here?
Do you want me to answer that? The answer is, is no. The issue is the use. And the parking, which may have been in effect in 1958, again, today, there are RSIS standards as to houses that are constructed, which requires certain number of parking spaces for houses. Obviously, none of those things were in effect in 1950 because there were no ordinances. So we can't establish or impose 2021 standards upon a house that was constructed in 1950. As a matter of fact, there are probably numerous houses in Franklin Township that predated the ordinance that do not meet today's parking standards or parking requirements.
Okay, so then on the continuous use, do we have records showing that it would, it continued in that capacity?
The, the continued use would be that there was never any change in the use to something other than what it was constructed for. It doesn't mean that it has to be occupied from 1950, when it was constructed, to today, every single day for the last 60 years or 70 years. It, we need to show that it was constructed as a residence, it was used as a residence. The use was never changed. There may have been tenants who come and go. There may be periods of time when the house was vacant because there were no tenants, but the intent was never to change the use. The use was always that of a single-family dwelling. So occupancy, continued occupancy is not the test. It's the question of whether the use was ever changed once it was constructed.
And that's correct. Just, just as a reference, if the, if the owner were to convert this to a garage and park his vehicles, and then seek to reconvert this into a dwelling, that would be, no, that would not be permissible because he would have relinquished at some point the use as a, as a dwelling. So as an example, the garage is a, is a good example. The testimony goes far has been, and the evidence presented is aimed at showing that it has been continuously used uninterrupted as a dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what everybody's saying. But, but here's, here's the issue. We're really talking about making this a legal two houses on one lot thing, okay? And I'm having a little bit of trouble with that. We don't know what the, you know, is the water? Is there two separate water systems there?
Mr. Bekus testified there's separate water, separate sewer, separate electricity to that house. There are separate services.
Okay. All right.
There's no basement in this house, right?
There's a crawl, there's a crawl space. There's no basement.
Another question, and I understand taxes out of our consideration, but is there a note or something that can be sent to the tax assessor's office to make sure that?
Yeah, well, really, when the, if the applicant is doing work to this, there should be a reassessment by the tax assessor. As part of that reassessment, the tax assessor should be able to assess the value of this structure on the property and include it as an improvement to the land. Again, this is, the, the board's
Thank you.
task here is really limited to those two, those two factors to analyze. If I, and I, if I could speak to these issues as well, these are all very good questions. Because a lot of times, what we have on these type of applications is you have an applicant that comes in and they say, well, I've been paying taxes on it, or I have two separate electrical meters, or I have two different water services. And the answer is, well, that doesn't prove that it was constructed prior to 1958, and it's been in continuous use since 1958. That just means the tax assessor noticed it at some point, you know, after that, and that just means that somebody applied to PSC and G to get two electrical hookups. That's not proof at all that it was, it was there prior to 1958 and has continued undisturbed until then. You know, this is the type of testimony, frankly, that you need. The last thing is that, again, I'll just speak again real quickly to occupancy versus use. I, I believe that one of the main cases on this issue is, I think it was an ice cream parlor. I believe that it was, it was used, that was constructed as an ice cream parlor. It was unoccupied, I believe, for decades, but all of the equipment was still there. And it was, you kind of left in its place for decades, so therefore, that use was not abandoned. So, you know, if this is, if this has been a house, if, you know, again, if, if he has proved to you that this house has been there before 1958 and hasn't changed, if it was vacant for some, unoccupied for some period of time, that's, that does not speak to abandonment. As Dan said, it would have to be actively abandoned in the form of, I think your example of converting it into a garage is a perfect example. If they had converted it, then they've abandoned that use, but it's not, not. If I could just add to that, abandonment is a, is a, is a legal term that requires some overt action and some intent to abandon. So it's very specific, and the facts have to support that. Really, what happens then is you lose your status as a pre-existing non-conforming use if you've done that. And the famous case is a, is a case, the pig farm case called the Valari, I believe it was called, where the guy owned the pig farm, and he dismantled all the pens and then started growing Alpha Alpha. And then the question was, did he intend to abandon the pig farm? And the court said, yes. Why? Because he took some overt action to remove pens and reconfigure the layout of the farm. Even though it remained a farm, he did some overt action here. So abandonment is, you know, you're getting into the, into a little bit more depth of the analysis. So abandonment is, you know, getting into the, into a little bit more depth of the analysis. I don't personally believe that there's any evidence here of abandonment. I think we're still in the analysis of, did this use or structure pre-exist the ordinance? And did it remain uninterrupted for that time period up until this date? So I think that, again, that stressed, that's the board's analysis.
Okay, any other questions? We should open to the public then?
Yeah, so the ones, we do have one member of the public, that person joined after I indicated that the means to express an interest to participate. You can either raise your hand by going to the participants' window, seeing your name. If you scroll over your name, raise hand, icon will appear and, and will call on you, or you can go to the chat function and indicate in there your desire to speak. We'll give a few moments for you to do so if you have any desire to make a comment or question on this application. While, while we're waiting, just to give him a few minutes, seconds here. Mr. Beekus, just a real minor point of clarification. In your testimony, you were saying prior to 1959, a number of times, the date is 1958. I'm assuming all of your testimony is unchanged, if it's 1958 versus 1959?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you for pointing.
No problem. Just wanted to make sure the record was clear. And so, Mr. Chair, I believe we've given the member of the public opportunity to indicate their desire to speak. I do not see any indication that they wish to.
Okay, then we'll close to, to the public. Mr. Lanford, any other comments?
No other witnesses, just very briefly, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the testimony is clear and unequivocal that this structure, or actually, both structures on the property were constructed on or about 1950. That is based on the municipal records. That is also based on the testimony and findings of Mr. Beekus in his initial investigation of both of the structures, and also quite frankly, based on his finding two days ago, which indicates that some of the subflooring contained newspapers dating back to 1951. So I think we clearly proved that the house, both houses were constructed prior to 1958. And as your attorney indicates, we have to show that the use was never abandoned or it's never changed. And obviously, Mr. Beekus has testified that the, the house was constructed as a house. It was not constructed as something else and changed thereafter, and that it continued to be a house when he inspected the property last year, and it continued to be a house when he inspected it two days ago. Mr. Lou indicated that when he visited the property prior to purchasing it, it was a dwelling. So there is no question that it was continuously used at all times from 1950 forward as a dwelling. So I think probably it's as clear as, as day that this, both of these structures pre-existed the zoning ordinance, and we're asking that the board certify these, these structures as pre-existing non-conforming uses. Concerning the other issues, I think your attorney is correct that the tax office may or may not change their records concerning what's on the property. If my client is going to be making renovations which require permits, he'll have to get permits, which also would put the municipality on notice concerning that structure. And the assessment of the property may change depending on, obviously, the improvements that he does make to the property. But again, those things are out of the purview of this board. This board really needs to find that these two structures predated 1958, which I think we've proven, and that they continue to exist since prior to 1958 to the present time as dwellings. All right, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Okay, any other comments from the board staff? Anyone want to make a motion?
Mr. Beekus, could you drop your screen, please, so I can see the board members? Thank you.
How do I do that?
This is Cheryl. I'll make a motion to approve the Dockard DBA 200022 for the property at 166 Victor Street, Somerset.
We need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All the board?
Cheryl Bethia?
Yes.
Bruce McCracken? Jewel Reese?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Rich Prokranik?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, we have no further business, so we'll adjourn immediately. Since it's the first time we met this year, wish everybody a happy new year, stay safe, see you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I'm going to get the resolution. It needs original signatures. So somehow, we'll, the three of us will coordinate getting the resolution for the new attorney in. If it's acceptable, Dan, I can mail it to you, and you can mail it back. And Bob, you can come up and sign it since you live relatively close. Is that okay?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night, everybody.